This would be another way for the board to message its support and for transparency and accountability. And just as a, we have to make sure it's clear that this would have a financial impact on the bar because we have a system that our fiscal year is different from the state's fiscal year. So we would have to use our system, amend our system to get us onto the right fiscal year. And it would also take some additional staffing resources in order to be able to process the budget change proposals. But it is something that we are putting forward as a recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Grammy. Any questions on this piece? Commentary, trustee Shelby, please.
Can I also add, though, but being involved in the budget process means that the legislators have a deeper understanding of the operations. And so if there are issues as it relates to funding and fee increases, because they'll be engaged in the process in a more meaningful way.
Certainly, I recall some, a lot of discussion about that. Trustees, Tony, please.
I was wondering, what have been the discussions between the state bar and the Department of Finance since the 2019 fee bill and the note that the signing message that the governor directed the conversation?
I believe it's pointed out in the item, but I, and Donna's the one that's been spearheading this piece of it, but to my knowledge, she's reached out multiple times. I don't think she has been successful in hearing back from them, as far as I know. Do you know anything differently, Leah?
No, that's what I know as well.
Thank you.
This time around.
Thank you.
Oh, I will add, too, we have a point here on this slide, that the idea would be that the licensing fee would be set by the Budget Committee instead of by the Policy Committee. So the Policy Committee would focus on, you know, the issues, policy issues, but Budget Committee would be actually setting the licensing fee. Okay. Okay, so we have on the slide, and what's prepared in the item was staff's recommendation in light of some of the conversations that we've had and heard from the legislature about the fee increase, that we would pursue it in 2025. But in light of the comments that we've been hearing at the meeting yesterday and today and the fiscal, with fiscal challenges, we would recommend that we would continue to, as you've already decided and back in January, to pursue a fee increase as part of the legislative priorities. So we would just maintain that instead of change it as we were originally proposing.
So I'd like to just remind the board here that the most recent state auditor's report actually did recommend a very specific fee increase for 2024 and not 2025. And it might merit some discussion in the context of this conversation we're having here. Certainly, it was, as my statement, my statement at the time said, I was pleased to see that the auditor not only, I think, gave a very favorable audit to our operations and our finances, generally speaking, but also acknowledged the need for additional resources to achieve our mission. And there's certainly been conversation among the legislative liaisons to that effect. And this is the opportunity, I think, for the board to have a conversation about that. I understand it's getting late and we're tired, but certainly, I'm very interested in my colleagues' thoughts. And I'll put it there. Don't all speak at once.
I feel like yesterday, in closed session, we...
Got to be very careful about keeping closed session confidentiality.
I feel like we've had conversations, I can say that. I can say we've had conversations in closed session. And I feel like that was a robust discussion. And so I'll leave it at that.
I just support very much the concept that we fight for the resources that we need as long as we can, and we don't give up. And the state auditor seemed to imply that that's what they would expect us to do, to ask for what we need. And so I am very pleased to hear the staff's recommendation on this one evolving to say, yes, we can, we should continue as one body to fight for a rating, a fee increase for 2024.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments on that, trustee Sewell?
I think the only thing that, I don't think this is, this is adding an awful lot, but Mr. Chair, your reference to the state auditor's report, I mean, they spoke to a fee increase specifically sort of in the confines of personnel cost and those sorts of things. And I would just echo what Mr. Tony said, that we think about as we, as we push forward and with our discussions on this particular issue, the totality of the need. And try to sort of articulate that in the best way that we possibly can. And I, I don't think, I think that might make us contemplate even higher fee, request for a fee increase, as well as the possibility of thinking about this over a multiple period of time.
Thank you, trustee Sewell. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Grammy, continue, please.
Okay, so to wrap up this side of the path forward, as we call it, the Ad-Hoc Committee also talked about some other options to improve transparency and accountability to give our legislative partners greater insight into the operations of the bar. And we believe there are opportunities to pursue this, and that would be beneficial to the bar and the legislative process, but we think it's premature to raise any specific options at this time. We're asking for the authority to continue discussions on this front to enhance transparency and accountability, but we don't have specific proposals on that one.
Which, which, by the way, makes sense to me in terms of where we've been and where we expect to continue to go, right? It is, it has been, I think, a more engaged discussion at various levels, informed by current events and past events equally, I think. And certainly, moving forward, at least speaking as one trustee, my hope is to continue the conversations at various levels, utilizing the talents and the relationships and the experience and the knowledge of the folks around this table by way of the trustees and certainly partnering with our staff. So thank you all for what you've done and in advance for what I hope we continue to be able to do in partnership with our stakeholders. I think we all share the same goal, right? Protection of the public. And that's what we have to keep remembering. Okay, what is it that we're asking for then, Ms. Grammy?
Well, we still have a few more things to go through.
Keep going.
Okay. So as far as operational proposals, so I just wanted to briefly remind you and also for the new board members that weren't here in January of what we've already adopted. So we have some technical amendments related to the discipline system. We have, we are proposing a fee increase to support DEI efforts. So with that one, we, it's currently at $2 in the licensing fee as an opt-out, and we are recommending a mandatory fee, and that it'd be $4 for active licensees and $3 for inactive licensees. Ensuring that reimbursement owed to the Client Security Fund is not dischargeable in bankruptcy. As I mentioned before, this has to do with the Ninth Circuit case that held that it was dischargeable in bankruptcy, and so that CSF debt was dischargeable. And so we're, we are pursuing a path similar to what happened with a similar decision related to disciplinary costs, and we're hoping that we can get some statutory clarification on that. Elimination of obsolete statutorily required reports. There are a number of reports, for example, having to do with construction-related claims and some things that were put into place and statute a long time ago. We've had very few complaints about it. So we're recommending that we don't have to continue to annually report on those. And then adjustment of due dates for certain statutorily required reports to allow for the board or committee review. So that just has to do with timing, and when, we like to move the deadlines to when the, after a board meeting. Sometimes reports are due before the board meeting, so we have to turn it in and then subsequent, you know, after the fact, get the board's approval. So we're just trying to move some of those. So the other two operational items that we'd like to add to that list today is a two-year term for the board chair. This is something recommended by the Ad-Hoc Committee, and as we've seen this year with Chair Duran, we believe that it's something to encourage continuity. The one-year term was really kind of a vestige of the past form of the bar, where it was that the, it was the president and that person was elected and they had their priorities for the year. And this is more reflective of the regulatory body and something that we think would be, would really strengthen the governance of the Board of Trustees. The other operational change we heard about earlier with respect to a rule change on the accessibility of bar exam and first-year law exam answers, that just, the statute currently says you can, that people can come in and inspect their reports or their answers four months after the exam results come out. But in reality, we make those available on the portal. So we just want to make this, what's in the statute concurrent with what is actually happening in practice. And there's a small, as we mentioned in the item, a little clarification in the actual statute that says you can see the graders' comments, but we don't, graders don't give comments. So we want to get rid of that language, so it's not confusing to applicants when they see their answers. And then the last thing, I just wanted to update everyone, and there's a more detailed update in the memo, but just on the status of potential amendments to Section 6086.1 of the Business and Professions Code, as you may remember, this is the statute that governs what we may disclose about attorney complaints in the interest of the public. And there have been a lot of discussions about this over the past, you know, couple of years. And so we do not recommend, as we mentioned at the May meeting, I mean, the March meeting last time, we don't recommend pursuing amendments as a legislative priority on behalf of the board. But staff did do some, quite a few roundtables with stakeholders, and we provided potential amendments to the legislative staff as technical assistants, representing our best efforts to incorporate the feedback we heard from stakeholders and also what we believe is really the best interest of the public, public protection. And I do want to thank George Cardona and Kirsten Geller and Eileen for their help with that, with drafting what I think is, you know, our best effort to provide to the legislative staff about that. So we have provided that, that language to them, and we'll continue to work with them if they have questions. Okay, questions?
Trustees, any questions for Ms. Grammy or anyone else? Trustee Tony, please.
Could you tell me, what are the obstacles to the use of net proceeds of the sale of the building? Yeah.
You mean, why would we want to amend that statute?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the statute says now.
I skipped over that.
It's okay.
Yes, let me find that.
Okay. While she's finding a specific language, it's a provision that says something like we can use up to 10% of the proceeds for improvements to the discipline system. So it's limited to the discipline system, and it looks like it's addressing the issue of supplantation. So not to support, like, existing operations, but to augment. So it restricts the amount of sale proceeds we can use in the aggregate, and then even within that, it has a very specified purpose for the sale proceeds. So you couldn't use it, as I read it, for just your operating deficit. I don't know, maybe you found the language.
I am still looking.
Okay.
That might not be a bad thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's bad to use proceeds from the sale of real estate for your operating budget. So I don't see an issue with that.
I found the language, if I may. It's, it's not just that, it cannot be used for any purpose until approved by the legislature by statute. So that's the language out of the statute. So that's, it would be more restrictive than just operating.
So it sounds, practically speaking, it sounds like if the building was sold, the proceeds would be put into a restricted account at the state bar, and then the legislature would then, at some point in the future, tell us how we could spend it, except for the 10%. Is that accurate?
So I think, if, whenever you all are ready to see the resolutions, I asked Louisa to strike the one referring to holding off on the fee increase for a year, and it is that resolution that includes the language about, about modification of the restrictions on use of the sale proceeds. So if we strike the entire resolution, then we're not moving forward with any of that. If the board decides they want to move forward with the restriction on the use of the sale proceeds, we would split the resolution.
Any objection to putting the resolution up on the screen so we could take a look at what Leah might be talking about? Okay, if we could have the resolution, please.
So you see, the last clause has to do with removing the restrictions.
So leaving the status quo on the laws it currently stands with respect to building sale proceeds? And opening the door to moving for, pushing for a fee increase for 2024, it sounds like? And of course, all of this then to be delegated to legislative liaisons? Is that right? For further refinement, or once it leaves the board here, are we proposing we're done?
Well, I don't think the way that our board policy manual, I don't, I don't think we've interpreted or understood that the legislative liaisons could make a decision. So usually, what we try to do is have these resolutions, they're often broad, and then within the parameters of what the board has approved, the legislative liaisons working with staff kind of go from there. If we're completely silent on the issue of use of the sale proceeds, I'm not sure, I think I could look to Eileen, too. I'm not sure that we, in the past, we haven't thought we could just have the legislative liaisons make that decision without coming back to the board. But that may be an incorrect approach.
Trustee Noel, your hand is raised.
Yes. If you need to resolve this, that particular issue before I speak, that's fine with me. I was going to ask, what restrictions do we have, if any, about board members getting together, having some discussions with the legislative liaison, having certain talking points, and having a concerted action that's really been asked for a few times yesterday and today, in asking for this 2024 increase? It seems to me that if we really are going to have the board heavily involved in going to the legislature, that, first of all, is that allowed? I don't mean to go into it, but having a concerted effort to lobby for our position and need of a fee increase. That's, and then if, if there are no restrictions to that lobbying effort, then I think it's important that, maybe led by Arnie and Melanie and Mark, as a starting group, I'd like to join that group and map out, not that we're going to go talk to people, but how we're going to talk to people, how we're going to get this increase, what things can we do between now and then to give us an edge, an advantage? It's kind of like I was saying before, why not go ahead and approve this particular thing, because then we can use that when we go to talk to the legislature? But anyway, I'd like to know that, I'd like to see how many people are, you know, I think if you know at least one person in the Assembly or the Senate that you could have a conversation with, then maybe you would join this group.
Thank you for the question, trustee Noel. I'm going to look to the general counsel to see whether the, to remind us if we've got internal policies or regulations that speak to this.
So in terms of the discussion about developing the message amongst multiple board members, we would still need to comply with the Bagley-Kean provisions. So there are a number of ways to do that. Either this could be agendized as another board meeting, or if there is a decision to create a smaller subentity or some composition of the board. But they would still require meeting within the parameters of the Bagley-Kean, unless it's one individual. It could also be delegated to one of the existing committee, but again, they would need to meet consistent with the Bagley-Kean provisions to reach a consensus among those individuals.
Does that mean we'd have to have a quorum show up?
I'm not sure that's what you were asking, Greg. I thought you were asking if individual board members could go meet independently with different legislators, or isn't that what you were asking?
No, no, I was asking for a concerted lobbying effort by board members. And with instruction and guidance from people that have much more experience than some of, some of us. And, and, and with, you know, our legislative people weighing in, I was, I'm, I am sensitive to the fact that we need this 2024 increase. And I don't know that the best idea is just saying, oh, if you feel like it, please go forth. I'm wondering if there isn't a way for us to operationalize a meaningful lobbying effort where as many of us as can or want to and whatever are all on the same page, all going to talk about the same thing, know how to respond to questions, know how to deal with staff versus the member, all of those things that, you know, obviously, Arnie, Melanie, and Mark, and certainly others on this board have figured out. But I, I think it's got to be a concerted effort and not just, well, it may end up, Leah, at what you said, is that we go individually and do our thing, and that's the way we've decided to do it. But I think it's got to be a concerted effort and decision to do it that way.
Okay, trustee Sewell, your hand went up.
Mr. Noel raises a very, I think, important subject that I think we need to delve into more deeply. I don't know if it's appropriate, I'm trying to do that in the open session portion of our meeting, but I mean, we have a, you know, we have a hearing that is coming up in the early part of next week, next Tuesday, where, you know, many of us are the, there's a possibility that several of us might, might, might be asked to testify at that, at that hearing, not only staff, but potentially board members. And it would be important for us to ensure the fact that we're, you know, on the same, on the same page and, and putting forward exactly what it is that we collectively have agreed to as a, as a body. So I...
Oh, Arnie, when are you going to be asked? It's Tuesday.
Oh, well, the fact of the matter is, it's happened already.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Well, as well as other members of the, of the board, including the chair and others have been asked, you know?
Oh, I see, okay.
So I, you know, I think it is important for us to, you know, but I don't, I don't necessarily know if now's the time in this open session, and, you know, clearly, we can't schedule a, you know, even Bagley-Kean, a meeting of either legislative liaisons or others before then. So I would hope that possibly in closed session or, you know, some sort of separate meeting, we could have, have a conversation about this. So I offer that as one thing. The other comment I just would like to make is that, I think it's really important, and I want to thank members of the Ad-Hoc Committee, you know, the chair for his foresight in sort of forming the Ad-Hoc Committee, but Melanie Highland, as well as the staff that was a part of the, of the Ad-Hoc Committee. We've been meeting pretty regularly and, you know, very sort of proactively over the course of the last several months since December. What you see before you is the, is the initial fruits of our labor. There is, there are additional conversations on topics that, that we plan to have over the, over the intervening months as well. But I do, I think we're, it's very, very important for us to get on the record today in light of the fact that on Tuesday, we have this hearing. So be, be able to at least affirmatively say, here are some of the, the actions or suggestions that the, that the board is making to add to the, an already long list of things that we've already done. And so I would just, just offer that, that we, that we make sure that we do take some sort of an action today so that we can assert that on Tuesday.
Thank you, Arnie. I actually do want to echo, well, thank you for, for your thanks of me with respect to forming the Ad-Hoc Committee, but truly thank you and the other members of the Ad-Hoc Commission, Committee, because I know that you've done quite a bit of work, and as you've suggested, will continue to do so. And I do agree with you that it's important to bring it before the full board today and get some, some action. I'm looking at the clock, it's, it's been about an hour and a half since I ate, and I'm going to ask for a quick break to use the restroom and maybe give the, give our general counsel some time to, there's some, some questions here that were raised with respect to Bagley-Kean, so I don't want to, I don't want to force her to, on the spot, give us advice without having a chance to do some research on her own. So let's, let's come back in 10 minutes, 12 minutes, please. Thank you, we are recording back in open session, usual, the usual 10 minutes turns into 15. Thank you for your, for your patience and your accommodation. I will note for the record, so folks know, trustee Stallings has had to leave the meeting a little early, everything's okay, but if he can't, he will be calling in to continue participation in the meeting as we proceed today. Certainly hope he's driving safe. I'm going to make sure that trustees Good and Noel are back with us, and we will recommence the conversation on the legislative priorities. Okay. Oh, we're still waiting for trustee Noel. Greg, if you would activate your, what do you call that, your camera, right on, thank you, sir. Okay, let's, let's continue. So the conversation where we left it off, Ms. Grammy, was that in looking for sort of board consensus on a group of legislative priorities, and we were several things talking about at the same time. I think that what, what I heard you asking for was, again, a consensus on the board on what are, what are the broad parameters, excuse me, the broad parameters of what we as a, as a body are going to instruct our staff to work with legislative liaisons or board, or board leadership vis-à-vis the legislature and potential legislation coming up. Just want to make sure I'm checking in with the board, that you all have that same understanding. And if you do, then I will ask for the resolution back up on the screen. If there are any questions before we start debating the resolution, I'm happy to ask for them and have somebody give an answer. But there it is, and there's the, there's the full, the full resolution. And if you could just stop there at the top so we can just look at them one by one. So we've got the Inspector General Discipline Monitor. I think that language is sufficiently broad and encompassing. We've got the Ethics Political Reform Act, Conflicts of Interest Rules, likewise broad and encompassing. We've got the process to get the state bar budget into the state budgets process. Again, there's been a... Again, there's been a fair amount of discussion about that. I don't, I don't see any, I don't see any controversy there. And then here's the last one, last three, excuse me. Enhancing transparency and accountability. Again, continuation of the many conversations we've been having at various levels. Chairmanship from one to a two-year term. And aligning the statutory language with current practice on 6065 of the BNP Code. Is that all? Okay. All right, Trustees, Trustee Tony, you've got something.
Let's start with the last one. I have no clue what the Business and Profession Code 6065 is. I'm clueless.
Ms. Grammy will remind us.
Sure, that's the one that has to do with the answers for the bar exam. If you don't pass the bar exam, then you have access to go. So it's just to make it consistent with our current policies because we already post that on the applicant portal.
And other people will know what that means?
Yes.
Okay, all right, fine. Let's go up a little. Okay, you can stop that. I really like the bottom for the resolved. I like the part of it where it says, as, you know, as long as sufficient resources and time are provided to make the necessary allocations. I like that. And I would like to see that same language in the establishing a Inspector General Discipline Monitor position, that same little clause put in there. Because when the information that was provided in the fiscal impact is that we've got the Inspector General cost of the position itself, at least one admin. And it said that there was, it alluded to some other costs. So, and eventually, I was hoping that these costs could be quantified estimated in such a way that, you know, while I, you know, had said earlier that we should be asking for a fee increase, you know, Trustee Sewell had mentioned that what was in the state auditor's report was limited. And, you know, I think, you know, Trustee Noel's question about what should we, you know, what is it we're asking for is a good question. Right now, I have no clue how much we're actually asking for and for what. And I think that that's eventually where we need to go. But at least for now, in this particular resolution, just making sure that we put in there that we need the resources for the inspector, you know, yeah, you know, are provided.
Okay, so it looks like staff is.
Thank you.
Making that change. We can see it there in the red line. I agree with the suggestion. Trustee Tony, thank you. Trustee Noel, I saw your, I think I saw your actual hand raised as opposed to your virtual hand.
Yeah, it was, I was thinking maybe I would do that. I just wanted, I kind of remember us talking about this position would be over at DOJ. California DOJ. And I like that because they go get their own budget. I don't, I don't know where that came in, whether it was a staff comment or whether it was just a note that, you know, somebody else had said that.
So I think that, I agree with you. I remember a discussion about that as well. And I think it's sufficient, your comment is sufficient to remind staff that that should be something to be explored. And the language as currently written is broad enough to allow for that simply.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't crazy. Although I may be crazy, but I didn't, but I remembered like you did. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out. Okay. Ms. Grammy, how does all that look? Does that look manageable?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question.
Yes, sir, please.
And if you would just scroll down just a little bit, I think it to what was redlined. Should we at least say something? If we strike out anything related to our seeking a fee increase, we strike out everything. Does it now mean that we aren't seeking a fee increase? Because we haven't commented on, in these, in the resolution about a fee increase.
We did, the board did adopt to seek a priority earlier to seek a fee increase. I don't have the resolution from.
Okay, so this is from our prior, so we would just, we would go back to where, what we had prior, was the prior work that we had done. That's, that's fine.
We should confirm that if there's timing on that or not.
Okay, I can look that up.
Okay, just, just hang tight. We'll get the answer very shortly. Any other questions or comments on other issues besides this last one? Okay, seeing none, we're just gonna wait for a bit to get the confirmation that the January directive addresses Trustee Sewell's question. And then I'm gonna ask for a motion and a vote.
Should be maybe in the minutes from the January meeting, I would think.
Okay, there it is. I think that's sufficiently broad. Okay. Thank you for checking, double checking that, Trustee Sewell. Can I have a motion on the resolution that's presented and edited, actually? Trustee Weddington Tudes made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Sewell with a second. Can we have a roll call?
Bratton?
Aye.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen? Not present. Mrs. Narros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
That's 10 ayes, 0 nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. Ms. Grammy, thank you. Okay, so I have been directionally challenged with the agenda today. I believe that we are now going to the whistleblower 708, which is a discussion and asking the board to approve an agreement regarding the California Department of Justice's investigation of state bar whistleblower and whistleblower retaliation complaints. This will be presented by Executive Director Wilson, General Counsel Doughtian, and Staff Attorney Caroline Holmes. There you are, Ms. Holmes. Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Let me tee that up. And I don't know if Leah has anything additional to say. She can always do that. And then I want to turn it over to my colleague Caroline Holmes to do a presentation. So this item pertains to entering into an agreement with California DOJ to enhance and improve and have a more robust whistleblower program for the state bar. And, you know, one of the lessons learned from the investigation conducted by May was the troubling aspect of not looking into complaints that were raised on various levels within the organization. And although the state bar has evolved since then and has an internal whistleblower policy in place and process in place, and including a process for addressing any complaints that may be filed against direct reports to the board, this takes us a step further and brings in an external agency to review any complaints about improper governmental activities. So with that in mind, let me turn that over, a presentation to Caroline. Special thanks to her and, and others within OGC that have worked tirelessly to get this moving quickly. And we did include in your materials a pretty detailed memorandum and PowerPoint presentation. Given that we are running a little behind, I've asked Caroline to keep it at a very high level, but will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, we see the presentation.
Okay, great. So we won't go through the entire PowerPoint. I'll just keep the overview slide up and hit some of the highlights. Currently, Human Resources investigates whistleblower complaints and as necessary, partners with the General Counsel to engage an external investigator. Any whistleblower complaints against the Executive Director, General Counsel, or Chief Trial Counsel are reported to the Chairs of the Board and Audit Committee for oversight of an investigation and where appropriate, oversight of an external investigator. Today, we're recommending that the board authorize the General Counsel and Executive Director to negotiate and enter into an interagency agreement with the DOJ to administer a comprehensive new whistleblower complaint and investigation process for the state bar. The DOJ is uniquely well-positioned to administer this new process because it already reviews and investigates whistleblower complaints against the California State Auditor pursuant to the California Whistleblower Protection Act and the Alternative Whistleblower System. Under this new process, any person can bring whistleblower complaints against state bar personnel, including all levels of state bar leadership, directly to the DOJ for review and investigation without prior review by the state bar. The DOJ will review complaints alleging that state bar personnel failed to act competently, ethically, legally, and properly in accomplishing their duties and/or engaged in whistleblower retaliation. If a complaint warrants investigation, then the DOJ will assign an independent investigator to conduct an investigation that comports with best practices and state law. If the investigation shows improper governmental activity likely occurred, then the investigator will prepare a written report for the state bar. The state bar will then take action to address the improper governmental activity, including as appropriate referrals to law enforcement, disciplinary, administrative, judicial, or similar adjudicatory proceedings, and/or employee corrective or disciplinary action. If the investigation involves allegations of wrongdoing by the Executive Director, General Counsel, or Chief Trial Counsel, the report will be delivered to the Chairs of the Board and Audit Committee to determine what action is appropriate. All investigations and related materials will be confidential. However, the independent investigator and the state bar may make certain disclosures as necessary to carry out appropriate action to address the improper governmental activity. The initial term of the proposed agreement is for one year, and the state bar and the DOJ will continue to evaluate the process throughout that one-year term. This is a bit of a trial run. And the anticipated cost of the agreement for the initial one-year period is $100,000 unless the DOJ receives prior approval from the state bar to exceed that amount. And now I'll open the floor for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes. Any questions from the trustees? Very thorough report, I appreciate that.
I just have a question of how the $100,000 was reached. What does that entail?
Eileen, I'm happy to address, or do you want to address? I can't see you on my screen.
It's based on a number of investigations. We've spoken with the DOJ about potential costs and the panel of sort of investigators they have on their end. And we believe, and Caroline can correct me if I'm wrong, this may cover about four to five investigations by DOJ when it is something they need to investigate.
Trustee Noel had his hand up, and then Trustee Tony.
Yes, if anybody could answer this, I guess you could answer it, Caroline. When you were giving us the overview of the enhanced program, you said some things that made me think that they were ongoing today. Is there currently any way for a member of the public or whatever to go to DOJ and complain about us?
So the DOJ has general enforcement authority against the state bar, just like their general prosecutorial authority as they do against other entities. But there's no, they don't have jurisdiction over us already under a Whistleblower Protection Act. The state bar is exempted from the California Whistleblower Protection Act.
Thank you.
Trustee Tony.
Could you give us an idea, on average, the past few years, how many whistleblower, employee whistleblower complaints have been received and processed by the state bar, Department of Human Resources?
Our Director of Human Resources isn't here, but he'd probably be in a better position to provide that statistic. I'm not sure if, I don't, I don't have those numbers prepared. I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. It was just an informative question.
Trustee Bratton.
Thank you. Is there no way to, I guess, for lack of a better term, pay by complaint? Instead of, what I understand this to be is sort of a flat fee kind of a contract?
So this is a not-to-exceed dollar figure. So we will be in effect paying by investigation, and then we'll also be paying the hourly rate of any DOJ hours put into reviewing the complaint, which will be billed out at the DOJ's statutory rate, which I don't have in front of me. But I think it was 500 an hour.
So is it fair to say if there are no complaints, then there won't be an expenditure of this allocated fund?
That's right. Well, the expenses will be limited to the cost of reviewing the complaints.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, if there are no complaints. If there are no complaints, then the cost of the agreement would be, you're right, $0. If there were complaints, but none of those complaints resulted in investigations, then the cost would be limited to the review of the complaints.
Okay.
I don't know how we budget for that, but $500 an hour, did you say, to do this from DOJ?
$500 an hour from, is what the DOJ bills their staff time at for this program.
That seems to be high to me, to me, for a governmental agency. But then I'm not a governmental agency. Just as a matter of curiosity, we, do we still pay DOJ to look into, going back to the fingerprint days, where we had them look at the fingerprints and then tell us if, if the attorneys had any, any criminal records there? Do we still pay them for that?
We do. We have an agreement with them for the subsequent arrest notification. But this is all automated. Mark, you may recall in 2019, all attorneys were required to be re-fingerprinted.
Right.
And we get automated notices from DOJ of the subsequent arrests. There's, I don't recall what it is.
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering if we still pay them. Maybe we can bundle it and get a little cheaper rate on all of it.
I'm with you, Mark.
Is that Geico? Any other questions or comments? Mr. Tony?
Here's, I very much support this concept. I very much support it. I, whistleblowing has been something that I've been, you know, whistleblower policy is something I've been involved in since 1986, when my buddy asked me to be on the founding board of the National Whistleblower Center, on which I still serve. So, I mean, the construct of this, I believe, is very sound, very strong, has a great deal of integrity. I am concerned about the cost. And I would rather defer this until we have additional funding. You know, we've, you know, we've been making some tough decisions. We do have a process that's in place now. So deferring this does not mean, oh, my God, we don't have a whistleblower program. We do, okay? This is better, no doubt. I would also like the additional information. It's, you know, the maximum cost for this agreement is $100,000 as Ms. Holmes stated. And she also did state, which is in here, unless the state bar provides prior additional approval. And that unless is kind of, to me, takes away the cap. That's what that language does. So I'm just a little, I'm not willing right this minute to approve this. I would be very happy to vote to approve this when I felt confident that the state bar had more resources to start adding additional expenses that were not originally included in our budget this year. that were not originally included in our budget this year.
Can I, I'm sorry. We included in the PowerPoint that it's up to $500 an hour, but looking at the draft that we're working, draft agreement we're working on with DOJ, the blended rate for the DOJ attorneys is $220 per hour, not 500. It's just that if they have to engage an external investigator to conduct something complex, or that particular investigator may have higher rates than DOJ, the rate is up to $500 an hour. So, but DOJ is coming in at 220. They may change their bulletin of rates in the future, but it would not necessarily be at 500.
Thank you so much, Aline. I thought that sounded high as well. I was relying on the 500 in the PowerPoint. Thank you.
I would just say that this whistleblower issue is kind of at the heart of the May report. We had a number of staff here, including staff who were, looks like, inappropriately terminated, who were trying to raise concerns about Girardi. And we did not have any kind of meaningful whistleblower infrastructure. And so I think how we've presented this item, because this is not the first time it's come to the Board. I believe, Aline, maybe in January is the first time you flagged this issue, or March. This is part of our response to the May investigation, is that we need to have an independent mechanism for staff to report concerns. And so in thinking about what we're funding and what we're not funding, I think there's not a whole lot that's more important than independent investigation of allegations of wrongdoing, particularly in our discipline system. So, you know, my strong recommendation to the Board is that you do approve this contract. I think it's critically important that it's with an external entity. Going the DOJ route is cheaper than private counsel, which is another option that we looked at. And having this handled internally is not a viable option, in my view.
And I would like to believe that this is a policy that would have support from the legislature. And when I say support, I'm talking about financial support.
Yeah, I just wonder, I just wonder how we would go to the legislature and ask for only $100,000 to do something like this when it's certainly within our purview right now. And it's a matter of prioritization for us, right? As a policymaking body, do we want to say to the world that, yes, we're willing to put resources in an important issue like this? Quite frankly, I hope we never have to use any of the $100,000, right? I mean, we've turned the page on that past, that we're, you know, we're still contending with now. But if something were to happen, I'd like to have the ability to have it investigated. Any further commentary or questions?
Just a quick question. How do we budget for this? How do we put this in the budget?
Via the Board's action today, it would be part of, the spending authority would be authorized if we have to spend. And then when staff brings back the budget amendment for 2023, it would be rolled into the budget.
So we add $100,000 basically into the budget?
Yes.
It'd be a mid-year budget adjustment and to take that $100,000 from somewhere else, I would imagine.
Just like we'll have to do a budget adjustment because the Board delayed acting on the Jenny items. So there's a number of things that are requiring budget adjustments. And that's how we'll handle them.
I'll make the motion to approve. The motion to approve the resolution as presented is made by Buena Ventura. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second.
Second by Good. Sorry, Brandon. If there's no further debate, we can have a roll call, please.
Broughton.
Aye.
Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Chen, not present. Cisneros.
Aye.
Good.
Aye.
Noel.
Aye.
Shelby.
Abstain.
Soell.
I think we have to do this. Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
Tony.
Nay.
Duran.
Aye.
Nine ayes, one no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next on the agenda is to approve the final proposal for general fund service fee increases. This item is being presented by Chief Financial Officer, Arisalee Montoya-Chico. I will note here that I am required to recuse myself from consideration of this item under our conflicts rules. If I'm not mistaken, there is another trustee who has chosen to recuse himself. I'm going to hand it over to Aline to walk us through this part, and then I will hand the gavel over to trustee, trustee Tony, who has graciously agreed to chair the meeting.
I, too, am going to have to recuse myself.
From portions. I have the recusal announcement. If it's okay with those trustees, if I make that announcement, if you see that I misspoke, or if there's anything additional that came up, please feel free to chime in. So the agenda item involves approval of certain general fund fees. And given, you know, certain conflicts, there are certain individuals that are conflicted out. So for the law corporation fee proposal, trustees Broughton and Stallings are conflicted out, and they will not be participating as to that particular vote. MCLE Provider Certification, trustee Chen, she's currently absent. Chair Duran, trustees Good and Noel. For LLP, trustee Chen also absent, but just in case she joins. Chair Duran and trustee Good. And for Legal Specialization, even though it's a discussion item, in the event there is anything substantive on that end, trustees Broughton and trustee Buena Ventura are also conflicted out. Thank you.
Aline, this is Arnie, real quick. Is this, I just wonder about our quorum requirements and our voting requirements. Are we going to be okay?
So we've got, let's count, Luisa, we've got the quorum, right? No, they don't have to leave the room. No, we're good. We're good. And in fact, the conflicts rules would allow for individuals to vote. Just as when they're voting, they would need to recuse themselves as to that particular item.
Okay.
Similar to how we've done, did it at the Finance Committee meeting, and also how budgets are usually approved when there are conflicted components.
Right. The thing that got me, there were even more members that now are, so.
It is, but we have a little cheat sheet that Luisa and I will follow as a vote of hers, but we'll do our best to make sure we're in the right place.
So how would you like us to go through the discussion? Because we need to go through the, is there someone here? Oh, Arisalee, are you going to be presenting this item? So what I would suggest is that our Chief Financial Officer presents the item. And then before we take the vote, I am going to, you know, after we've had the discussion and questions, I'm going to ask the people who have to recuse themselves, I'm going to ask for their input as to whether they feel more comfortable having the, a single vote on the entirety of this item with the recusals listed, or whether they would feel more comfortable having each of the four fee increase recommendations voted on separately. So you can start thinking about that for yourselves, because not everybody is recused on everything. And it's actually pretty complicated here. So I'm going to be asking those of you who will be recusing yourself from at least part of this, what your preference would be. But I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Chief Financial Officer, Montoya-Chico.
Thank you, Mark. So this item is seeking approval from the Board to approve our general fee increase recommendations that have been brought to the Finance Committee previously. I will try to go through our presentation quickly. Bridgette's here, trusts me with the MCLE Provider portion. But if there's any questions, please feel free to stop me. So just really quick on the policy, we do have an internal policy that we would review fees every five years. However, at the Finance Committee meeting last week, we did adopt some amendments where the fee review is not going to happen every three years. And between those three years, we will have an annual CPI adjustment to any fee where it's legally permissible. So today, again, we're seeking action to approve the general fund fees after this item. We're going to go into the admissions, a discussion of the admissions fee increase proposals. That would just be a discussion item, but, you know, we will discuss the overview of admissions. So these are all the programs that we have reviewed so far as part of our overall general fund fee programs. Again, this has been brought to the Finance Committee meeting in the dates you see noted on here. Two of these programs, we did put out for stakeholder comment, and that's the LLP and the MCLE Provider Programs. We wanted to get stakeholder input on those changes to the fee structure. So later in this presentation, we're going to focus on, a little bit more on those. I did want to highlight really quick, in the State Auditor Report, you know, part of the recommendation to increase the fees by 24 and 6 for active and inactive was that that these fees in the general fund would achieve basically full cost recovery. Part of their intention in recommending the fee is that we would use less license fees, license fee revenues to subsidize the programs that are operating at a deficit, which is what's happening right now. The general fund programs that are operating at a deficit are essentially being subsidized by these fees. So the recommendation today in aggregate is going to generate about a $1.7 million of additional general fund fee revenue. It is less than what the State Auditor had in their recommendation, but that's for two main reasons. And that's, these programs here, the Lawyer Referral Service and the Mandatory Fair Arbitration Program. These programs, we're not recommending any fee increase at this time. They are currently undergoing operational review and improvement initiatives that is going to impact the fee assessment. So at a later point in time, when we're done with those reviews, those operational review, we will potentially consider, or we will consider whether a fee increase is recommended. So for now, we are not recommending a fee increase on these two. I do want to emphasize, however, that the $1.7 million in the aggregate is sufficient to cover the cost of all of the general fund programs that we are recommending for increase. So there will be no deficit with this recommendation. So here's a really quick summary on the three programs that we did not seek stakeholder impact, that's Certificates of Standing, Law Corporation, and MCLE Attorney. I did want to highlight really quick, we did have certain considerations when we were assessing what fee increases were necessary. We did, of course, look into the actual cost of the program. We did look into any requirements for certain level standards or a need to achieve certain level standards. We also did have a comparison of costs charged by other jurisdictions for similar programs, so we took that into account. And as part of Finance Committee feedback, we also considered ability to pay, meaning those individuals or programs who could afford a higher increase to subsidize other programs, did have higher fee increases. So some of the factors that we used in our overall fee assessment. This is the LP, summary of the LP program that we did put out for stakeholder comment. There were about, close to 100 LPs that were impacted as a result of the changes we were proposing. We only received about six comments, most of which basically were just in support of raising the cap, but not increasing it. We currently do have a cap set at 2,500. Again, in last week's Finance Committee meeting, this was discussed, and the Finance Committee decided that we would remove, we would eliminate completely the cap. And now Bridgette's going to go for the MCLE Provider.
Okay, so just so you know what these acronyms stand for here. SAP is Single Activity Provider, and MAP is Multiple Activity Provider. So the single are people that, or organizations that just get approval for one particular program. The MAPs, as we call it, will apply their certain criteria that they have to meet. And then they can just offer their unlimited number of programs during their period. So one of the recommendations we're making here is to add a tier for profit and nonprofit. We haven't been tracking yet how many nonprofits we have, but we think it could be up to 47% of nonprofit and government agencies that offer MCLE. But we are proposing an increase, as you can see here on the screen. We're also proposing that we change the renewal period for the MAPs from three years, from two years, sorry, three years to two years. And that we include some late fees on both of them, which would, is really consistent with what we've seen doing research from across the many jurisdictions. Okay? And then we did solicit feedback, too. We also were considering some other potential fees, which were not based on feedback that we received recommending right now. So a lot, the public comment that we received in opposition to this, we did receive 660 responses. A good number of them did oppose fee increases, but a lot of them had to do with fees that we are not recommending move forward right now. So as you can see on the screen, there were a pretty, a smaller, much smaller number that actually opposed, 67 opposed the fee increases that we're representing today. But for the most part, you know, we just really recommend that we move forward with them because there, we are operating at a deficit here, and this is consistent with what other jurisdictions are charging. That's it.
The floor is open for questions. Can we, just for the moment, take this, thank you, appreciate it. Okay. Well, in the absence of questions, I'd like to invite the Board, the trustees who are conflicted out of part of the resolution to weigh in on whether you prefer the motions for which people are conflicted out to be taken up separately, or whether you are fine with one vote on the entire motion with a detailed notation of the eight members who are recused for at least part of this. Yes, trustee Good, please.
Thank you. I'm fine with just one vote on everything. And when we vote, we'll just note what we're recused from. And actually, the General Counsel's office already prepared suitable language in that regard. So I'm good with that, just to move this forward faster.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, great, great.
Same.
I'll move the item.
Looked like trustee Stallings had a comment, please.
Okay, sorry.
It was just in agreement with trustee Good.
Okay. Well, hearing so far no objections to that, I will take trustee Soles, the Chair of the Finance Committee's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, trustee Buena Ventura, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Well, with that, I want to ask our General Counsel whether there is a need to state before or after the motion what the recusals are for. I seek your guidance.
Sure, thank you. So we are going to go through roll call, roll call vote as Madam Secretary calls out the trustee names. When they vote, they should note their recusal in connection with the vote. And then it might take us a minute to just tally up everything to make sure we have appropriate votes to carry out the motion, but that would be the appropriate process.
Thank you for that guidance. I really appreciate it. This is a little, a little out of the ordinary, so thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Broughton.
I vote yea, and the resolution.
I vote yea and the resolution except that I recuse myself from the decision with respect to fees concerning law corporations.
Buena Ventura?
I vote aye with the recusal on legal specialization.
Chen?
I vote aye on the resolution except that I recuse myself from the decision with respect to fees concerning LLPs or concerning MCL provider certification.
Mrs. Narrows?
Aye.
I vote aye on the resolution except that I recuse myself from the decision with respect to the fees concerning LLPs or MCL provider certification.
No?
I vote yea on the resolution except that I recuse myself from the decision with respect to the fees concerning MCL provider certification to the financial interest.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stallings?
I accept myself on the, I previously stood by a general counsel.
Then she was coming in broken, with bad connection. He's recused as to the law corporation, and I believe that's what he was conveying. Thanks.
Tony?
Aye.
And Chair Duran is recused.
We'll give the board secretary and general counsel a minute to tally up the vote.
Thank you for a much needed break. I appreciate that.
They're just tallying up the vote.
Oh, good.
Just so you know, it's just a tally. It takes them a minute. Quite a few little things. Congratulations, everybody. I'm going to turn it back over to Ruben.
We've been talking about spending money all day and money we don't have, and now you guys just added 1.7 million to the budget, so thank you.
Right on. Thank you, trustee Tony. I appreciate that very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is to discuss the admissions fee increase proposal currently out for public comment. This item is being presented by Ariseli Montoya Chico and program director Audrey Ching. This is a discussion only, and we're ready for it. Thank you. I don't see Ms. Ching, but I suspect she's being promoted.
Well, we're waiting for that. Chair Duran, I recuse myself from any discussion of admissions fees due to a financial interest.
Thank you so much.
I see Audrey here, so we'll kick it off. Again, we'll try to make this quick in the essence of time. Give me a second for the presentation.
I think Luisa's sharing this slideshow.
Well, she pulls that up. Just as context setting here, of course, we're not asking the board to take action. We do very much want to get your feedback, though, because some of the fee increases that you're seeing in this proposal are quite substantial, and I think they shock the conscience, some of them. The the level that the fees would need to be increased to achieve full cost recovery. So with given the intention to bring back a proposal for a vote in July, it is important for us to get a sense of where the board would like us to go in finalizing that proposal.
You can go to the next slide. So as Leah said, this is this is a discussion item. We'll go through a few slides here, but the details are in your agenda of the actual fee increases. So just really briefly, you know, where we are today with the admissions fees. As I said in the general fund, general fund fees item, we do review the fees every five years. The admissions fees in particular have not increased in at least five years. Actually, all of them have been increasing at least five years, some even longer than that. So they're definitely due for a review and potential increase. We have had escalating costs over the years. Personnel, of course, is going up year over year. The cost of administering the exam has also increased, and COVID definitely exacerbated those costs. Coupled with the declining number of applicants in the admissions, we basically have a structural deficit in the in the admissions fund. We have had a structural deficit in the admissions fund for adopted 2023 budget. We budgeted a $7 million deficit in the admissions fund. And the reality is that really in 2024, the the fund will not be solvent if we don't have some sort of fee increases. We will additionally have to look into cost reductions to be able to make the the fund solvent.
This is going over the fee proposal that's been out for public comment. Just to note at the top, there has been a guiding principle in the increases, the options before you include higher increases for applicants who are already licensed attorneys in order to reduce the fee impact on students and non-attorney applicants. Option one, fee increases are full cost recovery, so the true cost of providing each service and program in the Office of Admissions. The option two, fee increases reduce the deficit, limit the increases for those with lesser ability to pay by 10%, moderate increases for others, and where the full cost recovery, again, the the actual cost that would need to increase to cover services and programs are extreme, and there are concerns about ability to pay. Some other facts for you, and some of the fee increases only present one option, there's not an option one and option two, because in those fees, we don't have a concern about ability to pay, full cost recovery would be achieved. And then looking at other states, what other states charge for similar services and programs, and we're benchmarked against those jurisdictions. So if we look at the next slide, I believe these are hyperlink, so we can click through real quickly. So this is how we put them out on our macro site for public comment, and the public was able to click through and not only see what we currently charge, see which year the last increase was. So again, some of them are more than five years ago. And then option one, again, that full cost recovery, so covering the actual cost. And then option two, some lesser increases. You can see, if you look to attorney costs, so licensed attorneys that apply for the bar exam or for moral character determination, those are larger increases, and that is a guiding principle of ours to see who would have more ability to pay. Maybe if we click through, Luisa, to attorney special admissions. As I was saying on that last slide, some areas did not have two options. So these are benchmarked against other jurisdictions where we believe that these increases would reflect ability to pay and then would be very similar to what other states charge for these programs. Looking at the law school regulation, I think here, looking at the current fees for our Cal accredited schools, annual report, option one, the the actual cost to cover the program versus option two, you can see there is a pretty stark difference in those two options for you to consider when we come back to the board in July. Going through some of the public comments, public comment just closed on the fee proposal on the 15th, but there were some themes worth mentioning to you. Concerns about the financial burden of the fee increase on law students and recent grads, marginalized groups, low income groups, disagreement with us passing the cost of our deficit onto prospective bar takers, concerns about what this would do to diversity and inclusion in the profession, calls for us to look for alternative measures to generate funds, suggestions on how to streamline the administration of the bar exam on moral character so we wouldn't have to charge an increase in fees, concern about the lack of reciprocity with other states, and then calls for more transparency about the actual cost breakdown.
Sorry. And Audrey, can you share what the universe was for public comment in terms of how how many responses were received?
No, I didn't. We pulled those themes before it closed on the 15th, but there were, the last time I looked over, I think about 500 received.
I think at the time they were analyzed, it was like 340. But they were analyzed prior to the close of public comment, so I haven't seen.
So, really quick, so what are the next steps for us now that the public public comment period closed? We will have all of the comments consolidated again, and if there's any different themes, we will certainly mention them at the next meeting. We are going to work now with the finance committee to finalize the recommendations, finalize the fee proposals, and bring it to the board in July for approval of of the admission fees. At that point, at a later meeting, staff will also need to present, will also be presenting, I should say, the cost reductions necessary to address any gap that may exist as a result of whichever fee options we end up adopting.
Audrey, do you want to preview for the board some of those cost reduction initiatives that you're assessing, namely with respect to administration of the exam?
Sure. We've been looking as a staff team at what we can do to cut costs for the bar exam. The facility costs, as Ariseli mentioned, have increased post-COVID, and a lot of what we do with our hotel sites where we accommodate accommodated individuals for the exam, we might need several floors of private rooms, et cetera. So we're looking to see where we could have larger sites, so fewer sites across the state, but larger sites where we might be able to have, you know, several thousand standard exam takers in one area, and then some auxiliary space at the same site for accommodated applicants. So trying to look at economies of scale. We've also been trying to price out what it would look like to have our own content, so the California content, the written content that we could have online, have that online, and then the National Conference of Bar Examiners, multiple choice content, we're not allowed to administer that online, so we have an online date and in-person date. So we're looking at several different options that will land on proposals and models to share with the board in July.
Great, thank you. Questions for staff? Ray, please.
Can you tell me if the bar has any kind of, and this is for the low income or marginalized community comment that was made, if there is any kind of waiver or forgiveness or some kind of assistance that that can be asked for if you can't afford to pay the fees?
We don't have that for the programs and admissions.
Any other questions?
I have kind of a comment. There's a couple of things. One is, these are comments I made with the in-finance committee with the previous subject, the general fund fees. One is that the longer you wait to review the cost of fees, the more you're going to get behind. And the more dramatic the increase has to be for you to just get even, recover the cost, pay for the cost of the program. So I think five years is far too long to wait to review the cost. So that's that, that's part of it. You know, it's bad when you get to a financial situation where you don't have the staff and resources to review the fees so that you can increase them to get more staff and resources. And this is a discussion that I've had with our CFO here. And it's, it's a real tough position to be in. You don't have enough money to raise more money. Okay, that's a tough situation. So I think this is a, going to require, when we think about it in July, a two-part step. One part is, how do we get to a pathway if we cannot immediately get to recovery in one fell swoop? What's a pathway? And how do we avoid falling behind in the future? Which is why what we ended up with in a finance committee for the general fund was to review every three years and to have a cost of living adjustment, basically, CPI, in between, so that we're at least not falling behind every year we cannot review it. So I'm just giving that comment that I do think our starting point is cost recovery, and then, yeah, we'll have to look and see, is that actually feasible in every category? Maybe some more so than others. Look at the distribution of who can afford and who is, who needs more assistance, more help, more relief, as trustee Ventura suggested. So those are my comments.
Thank you, trustee Tony. I think that's precisely the kind of conversation that the staff is hoping we'll have, and let's continue that with trustee Stallings, please.
All right, thank you. And hopefully I'm coming through clearer now.
You are.
In regards to the the law school licensing costs registered in Cal accredited, curious to see what steps staff has taken to try and cut costs in those areas. If this is like, we've turned over every stone, and there's simply no, you know, nothing else to to cut in that area, no other efficiencies to be gained, and this is really, you know, the sticker shock is exactly what it is, and this is what we're going to expect at the future board meeting.
Do we have any data on that?
I think that, oh, well, the increase, the last increase we did for the law schools, law school regulation was 2018, and I don't have the numbers, but it wasn't a large increase. So I think it might be something that has been building in terms of escalating costs to administer the program.
And then as far as a way to mitigate sticker shock, is there any appetite to ease into these fees to have them be borne out over several years? Or is it, this is exactly what we need in the next, in the next year in order to maintain solvency?
Well, so as as we mentioned, right, option one is, yes, there is sticker shock there because that's what would get us to break, essentially break even. Option two is, you know, a more palatable option. There could be a third option if you, you know, based on your feedback somewhere in between. I know at some point we had discussed maybe scaling it, scaling the increases over a few years. Certainly, it's an option we could consider. At this point in time, these are, these are just the two options that we put forth, but they're not set in stone. We're open to recommendations if if option one seems too high and option two is not going to close the deficit entirely.
And I would just say on this particular issue, you know, there is some criticism or concern about our oversight of these schools, and I'd say particularly with the registered law schools, I think there is likely more to be done, not less. And so that makes the conversation about cutting the administrative costs difficult in that area. There are good public protection reasons for us to be engaged in oversight of these institutions. I do think certainly when we come back, we can have a scaled approach, multi-year approach, and as Ariseli mentioned, we could do an option, you know, 1.5, that is somewhere in between what you see today.
Would it, would it be too simplistic to suggest that that 1.5 just split the difference between option one and option two? In other words, you know, you've got two numbers and just cut in the middle? You, I mean, from a accounting perspective?
We could, you know, we could, we could do that. It will just close the gap, the deficit gap. It will just close the gap, the deficit gap more. Anything in between option one and two will, will help.
For those law schools, that's still like an $11,000. I think that, yeah, full cost recovery, $22,000. So it's still a very steep increase.
And would it be hyperbolic to suggest that that would put some law schools out of business? Is that a one-time cost, or is that an annual cost?
It's an annual cost, and that is looking at the accredited schools. So I guess what we could do, too, is, we talked earlier today about the tuition that they're charging. And I think some of those numbers that we had were from 2018. So we could look at what they're, you know, what tuition and enrollment is like at those institutions, and how they might be able to, you know, bear the cost of that increase.
Yeah, I think that'd be really helpful.
Sorry, Manu, go ahead.
No, I just said, I think that'd be really helpful.
Yep, so every client that I'm dealing with is looking at huge cost of living adjustments simply because of that past year and a half, two years of inflation. So it's, it would not, you know, it would not surprise entities and to know that that's something that is just going to be necessary. Any other commentary from the board? Is there a consensus on whether to suggest a 1.5 approach?
Not for me. I, I, I believe the starting point is option one.
Okay. Let's, let's start with that question, then. I mean, certainly, we're not making a decision here. I think you're looking for, you know, what is the general temperature of the board? We hear one very strong, hey, look, option one is the only thing that's going to satisfy our fiscal needs. Mr. Tony?
Seven million dollar deficit in this fund? That's a big number for what we're doing. That $7 million we have to fill from other, that, that's a lot.
And have been doing so for, for a very long time. Ms. Wilson wants to say something.
I think we could start with option one, as I understood it. Mark, you were saying we could sort of have that as the default, and then on a case-by-case basis, ratchet it down. So I think effectively, we can achieve a 1.5 in some places. So I think we can, we can work with that. Yeah. I do think we, we may want to consider, as a staff team, getting more public comment on our next set of options that we develop, because I think there will be some time sensitivity in relation to implementing these for the February bar exam. So we just have to think about that, but I think we can work with this.
Okay. I think that all sounds good and makes sense. More difficult conversations to have, right? But at least we're having them. Okay, if there's no further input from the board on this, Ms. Montoya Chico, I think you have what you need.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So these next two items are informational. One, 7/11, this is something you requested. Mark or Trustee Tony, you had some questions about the metrics. I think this is after reviewing the state audit report. And then the Finance Committee has already heard 7/12, but pursuant to request, we're always putting that now on the board's agenda for discussion. Given the time and the fact that we have a closed session agenda, I, I just offer to the board, you know, to ask if you want to hear 7/11 and 7/12 or for this time around, not, I'm sorry.
Certainly appreciate you putting it on, on the agenda. Oh, item 710 had a resolution? 7/11 has a resolution?
It does.
Performance metrics, is it just receiving them?
It's not a, it's not a resolution that needs to be acted on now. And I don't, we never have before. It's, it's formalizing something that we've been doing. But it's totally up to you. I'm just trying to give you guys time.
No, I, I understand. Is there, is there a desire from anyone on the board to actually take up a resolution on 7/11? Again, I appreciate that. It's been added to the agenda. Certainly, we've all had a chance to review it. I don't see anybody on the screen who is asking for that resolution, so we will table that matter. And thank, thank you to the staff for providing the further information and the metrics. 7/12 likewise, no questions? All right.
Thank you, Lisa. Sorry. We're gonna...
Nice to see you, Ms. Chavez. Hope you're well.
She's gone, okay.
Okay, that completes the board's open session business. Another two days of quite a bit of work. Certainly, it feels dense, and we, we're not quite yet done, folks. We are going to reconvene into closed session and continuation of this, what we started last night. I will confirm with the general counsel that because I announced those items yesterday before we went into closed session, there's no need to announce them again.
I think that would be, okay.
Okay, trustees, you will...
Chair, this is, just real quick. Did, did we, are we pushing 7/12 to July? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Seven, yeah. I, I, I think the direction generally is that some items similar to that will be on every agenda. Is that right? 7/11 and 7/12?
7/12 is the financial statements? Is that, I'm not, yeah. If you, if you want it to come back to the board, it can. By July, I think we will have Q1 of 2023 also.
Yeah, we might as well do it all at once.
All right.
Okay, good. Wonderful. So trustees, you should have received a link?
Yes, it's the same link as this morning, but I will resend it.
Okay, and we will see you all in closed session. There will, as required by law, we will, I will come out at the end of that closed session. I don't know what time that will be. And if there are reportable actions or resolutions, we will make them known. Thank you, everyone.
I'm going to have to leave. I have to go pick up 100 jury questionnaires to go through this weekend. I've got to be there before they court closes, so I'll, I'll talk to you guys soon.
Thank you, Mark. Be safe.
Recording. Okay, good evening. We are recording live back in open session. It's about 6:18 on Friday, May 19th. The board has concluded its discussions in closed session. I am going to ask the secretary to place on the screen a resolution of an action we are reporting on with respect to item 7004. This was the discussion regarding sale price and terms and leasing price and terms for 180 Howard Street in San Francisco, the bar's building in, in the city of San Francisco. The board approved the following resolution. Resolve that the Board of Trustees approves moving forward with the sale of 180 Howard Street for the direct staff to further refine the pending offers from prospective buyers consistent with normal real estate practices, and to determine which one is most likely to provide the best terms and conditions for the state bar, keeping in mind sale price, leaseback terms, and other business terms. The Board of Trustees directs staff upon determining the likely best offer to commence negotiations with the selected buyer over a purchase and sale agreement and a leaseback agreement. The Board of Trustees directs staff to return to the Board of Trustees or the Board Executive Committee for review and approval of the purchase and sale agreement and leaseback agreement. And I believe that takes us to the end. That is all I have to report. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for two very long but productive days of meetings. Hope you have a good weekend.